At this time, we'll call the Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis, and myself, Jack Willie are the county supervisors. Lisa Smith is County Auditor. Luan Goke is our Administrative Assistant. And our first appointment this morning is with David Drier, our county engineer. Good morning, David.
Good morning. Five by hands for each three entrance permits and two right away utility permits. First entrance permit is for David and Wayne Lett. So for Class D residential on Seventh Street. An approval of that.
So move.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the residential entrance permit for David Lett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
An application for Mr. Mark Hire. Class D residential in Township of Bellevue on 415th Avenue. An approval of that permit have been reviewed and. Field Superintendent, so we're good.
Okay. Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the entrance permit, residential entrance permit for Mark Hire of Bellevue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Our last residential entrance permit for Mr. Rick Lowen. Township in Kokona on 35th Street.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Rick Lowen's entrance permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And we have two permits for utilities. The first permit is from the Kokona Valley. It's first from Baldwin Nashville Telephone Company. Installing fiber optic and South Fork Township along 134th Avenue. Extend yourself to Seventh Street past the airport. Recommended approval.
So.
Show me.
Want to do both?
Oh, you can do both. And the second is one from the Kokona Valley Electric Company installing some underground residential district. Conduit in LaMotta underneath.
230th?
Yeah. At the Hoffman Farms, recommend approval of those two permits.
Both to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the utility permits. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
So what I have for this morning's.
Nothing about the crack seal? Oh, that's for next month, next, next week. I mean, just hear about that.
How's it going as far as the roads and?
Well, they some spots they dried out, still a little wet and others had some wash outs with some rain that be taken care of. You know, now that you can see more of what happened underneath the snow. Few damaged fence complaints.
Normal stuff.
Normal stuff, yeah.
Yeah, no, they seem to be pretty good. They're drying out. You see a few frostboughs coming out and a couple of wet spots.
So did they check on the tree on 35th Street?
Oh, yes, I did. That's the one you, yeah, there's a letter going out.
Was it actually plant?
Very small shrubs. I mean, they shouldn't be too difficult to relocate. But they were within the right of way distance from the center of the road. So we'll ask that the gentleman hold them back up onto his property there.
What's? Setback where right away?
Usually it's 33 feet from the center of the road.
Okay.
This one, the state actually purchased right away years ago, so it was 40, 44 feet. Call that number probably 40. So it's a little wider through there. So.
What about Rockdale Road, Pedro?
I didn't, you have to go look everyone.
A little different.
Okay.
I think the standard pretty much is 33 feet. Yes, there's a special exception for something.
Yeah. And a paved road might have right of way purchased years ago when they surfaced it. So if you're interested in, we can, we can dig it up and take work.
Yeah, that's my brother's place up there and he talked about putting some trees up because.
Sure.
When the cars come by at night, it likes shoot right into the bedroom. Maybe get something down there. I sure don't blame them in the right way.
Just put some grapes up.
And we talked about, I mean, I know the setbacks from the right of way for structures and stuff is another 60 feet or something.
Yeah, that's the only.
Yeah, but then as far as tree planting, we, I've talked to Christina a little bit among this last couple of weeks. She's looking into some other maybe ordinances or resolutions that are out there. So we can't really put them on the property line either because some people have some nice barrier fences and, and when the tree's this much, it's okay. When it's this big, it puts a defense over it.
And yet half the trees on the other side of the.
Yeah.
It can be trimmed for farming to get through. Plant them into the ditch or into the.
We've got a lot of them in the right of way, but they've been there a long time.
Sure, certainly they're volunteer trees. We don't enjoy having new trees or anything, but certainly don't put them there.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Okay. Thank you, sir. One from ECIA is on yet, so.
Roger's on.
I didn't see his name. Well, we want, need, don't we need Matt?
Roger's saying, yes, I think he's trying to.
Oh, wait a minute. Do we have any public comment or visitors or citizens that wish to address the board? Roger, are you planning to wait for Matt?
You're muted.
You're muted.
How about that?
Yep. Hey, we can hear you now.
All right. Um, I'd like to wait for Matt because he's the one who's.
Lisa says he's, he's trying to get on right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Pardon?
Matt is on.
Matt?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Matt.
Okay, we're all ears.
Uh, am I muted?
No, you're fine. We can hear you.
All right. Go ahead, Matt.
Um, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning.
Um, so on February 20, or 16th, 2021, the Jackson County Review Committee met to discuss Temple Dance purchasing a property at 212 Western Avenue. Purchase price was 150 and then they're going to do some renovations to turn it into their new dance studio. Um, the board recommended approval of $178,000 20-year loan at 2% with interest rates adjusting every five years. Um, we did get an appraisal on the property. The property appraised at 211,000. Um, and then we will require a first mortgage on the property security agreement, then them personal guarantees of the owners, Mandy Cooster and Ashley Wing. And the board did anonymously approve the request.
So what is the timeframe to pay off the loan? You said it can, interest rate could be adjusted every five years, but.
It, it's a 20-year loan.
20 later.
This is an LLC. It's a limited liability company.
McDonald's, where you turn to go to the Methodist church.
Oh.
It's that church on the corner is the building that they're purchasing.
By the church.
Yeah, that church closed and so.
Well, yeah, I mean, the collateral is, seems to be sufficient. I don't know much about the business itself, I guess.
I'm not much of a dancer. I mean, they have a lot of students.
I, I guess my concern is what, what, what financial impact are they putting into the project? Um, if, if the building is 150,000 and the remodeling is 28,000, that's 178,000. Are they putting any, any funds into it?
There's an additional 20 to 30,000 of improvements that they're going to do as well. The total project, I'm just pulling it up here, was about, I think, 220,000.
Okay.
Total project was 222,500, so they're making up that difference.
One of the things that we talked about in the meeting was that, uh, and I hope you agree with this, Matt, is that is that we would advance the 150,000 and then they would show to the ECIA the advancements and what they paid to for the advancements. In other words, it's not an open checkbook. They would have to show the improvements that they were paying for, for the additional advancement of the 28,000.
Correct.
Has anybody done an assessment on the building as far as like the roof and other major stuff that could happen? The heat system, you know, some of them are older buildings and.
That's been there a while.
Yeah. I mean, just so it's been updated. Has your tenant inspection done?
I, I have not been there personally. Like I said, the appraiser was onsite. Um, for the appraisal and did his walkthrough.
So, and the other thing would be, is there any asbestos baitments that need to be done? That would be high on priority if you're having kids in there all the time. Or for anybody, I guess.
Did it, did the appraisal, did it say anything about? I don't remember exactly how old that building is. I remember it's been there for quite a while, but I don't know how long. Do you have any guess, Roger, is how long that building's been there?
Oh, it's been there, it's been there quite a long period of time. In regard to the, uh, the roof, question on the roof, it's a valid one. But if you look at the application that we saw, there is money for roof repair. I don't know if it's enough, but they've got in the, in their prospectus, $5,000 for, for roof. Now, that's maybe not enough, but it's in there.
That won't cover the roof, that's for sure.
Yeah.
I guess, Matt, what amount of money is available in the revolving loan fund at the present time?
932,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
Is that with the 300,000 that we've set aside for the Together We Build project?
That is not reduced from that, so you take that out, we got about 630.
What would the payments be on the note?
Payments, monthly payments are about $920 a month.
I, I think that the committee acknowledged this is a, a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but we, we, I guess the committee, the bankers committee, uh, felt that, uh, they voted in favor of, of approving this.
My understanding, we have at least one, if not two additional requests coming in.
Correct.
And can you tell us what the amounts of those are?
Um. One would be at about 150 currently, the other one will be at about 300. We do have, we do have the additional 100,000, 100, give or take, coming in from PMW as well. That will be returned to the county.
Still hasn't been returned yet?
Not yet.
Uh, Matt, you've had conversations with Wes.
Correct. I'm expecting it this week, so.
You've had several conversations, is my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, well, it's, it certainly do. Uh, one thing that I'd mentioned, what, Jack, one thing that I'd mentioned here is that we had an application that the loan, or the bankers committee met on, and we did not, we did not vote to, uh, move it forward. And if you're wondering about that, Nick Hockenberry would know all the details on that. But we had a meeting a week or so ago and we vote, and there was no vote to move it to the supervisors. But we did tell the applicant that if they wanted to bring it to your supervisor meeting, that would be fine. Is that correct, Matt? Is that a, did I explain that correctly?
Correct, we did not tell him though. I didn't think the supervisors, if it didn't, if it wasn't recommended by the board to bring it to the supervisors. If, if you want me to change that, I sure can. But I kind of thought you wanted a recommendation from the committee.
That's always been our request in the past.
I would make a motion to approve the revolving loan request from Temple Dance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I, I wonder if $200,000 could be more, or better invested in a newer building. I don't know what their space requirements are, but I mean, if you could build something for that to do what they're doing and it's all brand new, it would be.
Well, originally, when they first came to ECIA, they were planning to build a building. And then that changed into purchasing this building when it became available.
Okay, we've been working with them probably, we've been working with them probably a year, pretty close to a year. And they did have, they actually looked at two sites to build on, but it was just costly by the time you buy the land and get the infrastructure, you know.
Can you tell me, Matt, how many individuals are involved for the personal guarantee?
The two owners, Mandy and Ashley.
Okay.
So their payment would be $920 a month?
Correct.
Hmm. Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Right. Right.
Motion carried.
I would hope that the applications that we look at conform more to the original idea of the revolving loan fund that.
Well, my, that's one of my, that's, I really didn't vote aye because our, our, our loan was created to have help get jobs. And I'm not sure that this is going to create any additional jobs for the county. And it used to be, you had just so many dollars for, per job. This is not creating jobs. It is creating a, something that I guess people are interested in. But I, I guess, you know, I really have a problem doing this. I just, it just seems like $178,000 is, pays off the loan and pays for the remodeling. Yes, you say they're going to add some additional things, but I'm not sure it's something I'm really, really excited about. Especially when you say there's another one coming in for 300,000, another one for 150,000. And with this 178,000, 178,000, that's 628,000 and we have 932,000 subtracting the, the 300,000 for Together We Build, we have, we have $2 left or $4 left in the revolving loan fund. And that concerns, that concerns me greatly.
The, the one thing that I'd mentioned at the, at the meeting that we had on the applicant last week did not create any jobs.
Did not create what?
Did not create any new jobs. The, the meeting that we had a week ago in, in regard to the applicant that I talked about, that was not recommended, did not create any new jobs. Is that right, Matt?
Correct.
Well, I guess I thought when, you know, I guess I thought that was the purpose of the revolving loan fund was to help stimulate employment in Jackson County. And, um, we've had several that we've done that haven't. And, you know, this is just another example of that. And I wish them well, but I still, it still concerns me that it's.
And on this one, we did show, I think, creating two jobs, so there's some there.
And there's, there's no tax increment on a TIF attached to it, correct?
Not that I'm aware of, I don't, yeah, Nick shaking, he said no.
And they are for profit business, right? So they're a taxable entity, correct? And the church was not?
My understanding of the church was probably not.
So there'll be taxes on that once it transfers.
Yeah, there will.
The business.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for joining us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Brent will not be in today. They are still trying to meet with the individual and they're supposed to have a meeting this morning and then he said he would probably be in next week, so. Lisa.
I will yield my time to Luanne because you do have a public hearing at 10 o'clock.
Okay. You know, you look at $920 in a payment and all of the utilities and heat and everything. They have a lot of students.
The thing that scares me about it is what happened down here at the Catholic church when they sold that or gave it to the peace pipe players.
No. They sold it to Ed Kirchhoff. Ed Kirchhoff gave it to the peace pipe players.
Oh.
That's why it's called the Kirchhoff Theater.
Okay. Thank you. But it's not being used, it hasn't been used since.
No.
Good morning.
Good morning, Luanne.
All right, we'll start with the calendar today. Excuse me. Um, Jackson County Innovation Alliance Lunch and Learn by Zoom is not at 11:30 as I've got a new calendar, it's actually at noon. And any of you can go to that. So I, I will post that connection information in your calendars if you don't already have it.
Okay. On my iPad, it says 1 to 1:30.
I know.
But it's at noon.
That's what she sent this morning.
Okay.
Right, right. So I signed, you know.
I hope I have better luck getting in, I could not get in last night.
Oh.
It said, put in your passcode. I did. Incorrect passcode, try again. And then I tried to do the one-touch phone in and that wouldn't let me in. And I kept trying and trying and trying and trying.
The regular phone number?
Well, no, because she would have been at the meeting, just her 319.
It doesn't matter, there's always, assume there's a phone number that you can call to get into the meeting.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to do. It was on the form.
Right.
But it kept telling me it was the incorrect one, so I don't know. I, I finally did text her and said, I, I've been trying to get in, but I can't.
Okay, well, you're taking a look at that.
I was.
And you've been having trouble otherwise, so.
Just, if I had hair, I'd have pulled it out.
Okay, Wednesday, March 24th at 9:00 AM is an iris meeting by Zoom, at least for Larry. From 9:00 to noon is Prevention Through Dignity Workshop by Zoom for anybody that wants to be in that. At 1:00 on Wednesday is the Isaac Spring Conference General Session by Zoom for all of you. And at 4:00 that afternoon is the ECDC, ECIA Executive and Council Meetings by Zoom for Jack.
I have a question on the Isaac. I see we have a, we got an email this morning on, I didn't look, but there was a link on there. But to what it looked to me, they were doing the budget and the scholarships. So I don't know, it's just my opinion that that whole Isaac program that we signed up for.
Wasn't that worth the money?
No, it was not worth the value.
Right.
But we'll see what happens today and tomorrow, or tomorrow, Thursday.
And it's been very confusing to try to figure out what we are and aren't supposed to be.
Yeah. So. Then they want you to zoom in for a giveaway or something. Be interested in a vendor giveaway.
I've never won anything in 30 years, so I'm sure I'm.
I haven't either, but I don't sign up.
You gotta put your part in the box.
Okay, Thursday, March 25th at 11:00 AM is Beauty Solutions of Eastern Iowa by Zoom for Jack. Um, there is no RPA meeting that was originally on the schedule that has been canceled. At 3:30 Thursday afternoon is Isaac's Spring Conference General Session and Closing Session. So we'll see what they send us for that. Friday at 7:00 AM is the Hope and Leadership Team Meeting for Larry. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, March 30th at 9:00 AM. In terms of business for today. Um, there's a business for today. I'm looking to reappoint Fairfield Township Trustees Dave Franzen and Larry Helling to new terms expiring January 1, 2025.
And they have been contacted and agreed to that. Thanks. So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I am also looking for motion to correct term expiration dates for Fairfield Township Trustee Ron Reaganweather and Fairfield Township Mary Lou Johnson correcting the expiration date of their terms to January 1, 2023.
So move. Second.
My motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
My last piece of business is to appoint the 2021 ATV Committee. And I've given you a list. And it is essentially the same people as it was last year with the exception of Stephen Bradley. For approval to basically reappoint last year's commission with that one exception.
Guys, okay with me sitting on that committee?
God, no, I'm not.
I would move to approve.
I would second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, that was all I had for you.
Sweet.
Everybody, TV, how's that bill going to get to do that jumping?
It's still in, still on the table. I should say that, it's come out of subcommittee, so. You know, like in the form, they, Steve said the other day, there was 2,000, I don't know if you've ever gone, logged into that site where it showed where you can go and check on that bills. There's just, there are eight pages of.
Yeah, it's crazy how much stuff is in there.
But he said they've been through like 2,000 bills so far in the session, so. Yeah, no, hopefully it's still in progress. I haven't really, I didn't talk to Carrie or Steve the other day about it at the forum. It was rather active.
And what's the, the mental health one? I read through part of that, it's 52 pages.
Well, Laurie just sent that yesterday, didn't she? That was a, she said that was hot off the table, but I, I looked at some of the changes in the underlying. It's really hard to understand unless you.
The one I called my eye was like at the end of this fiscal year, we're supposed to give all our money to the region. Yeah. And I'm like, so how's that work?
I guess I was looking for the date for the funds. Funded down, so I didn't see that in there either. Funded down, so I didn't see that in there either.
Um, yesterday we had a a meeting to look at the about three hundred and four thousand dollars we had for uh left over from the first three COVID. So we, yesterday we awarded three hundred and three thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Uh, imagine the possibilities was, um, their request was three hundred thousand. They got eighty thousand. And that was for wages for overtime for people that IT expenses and wages for people that were working with clients that had, did have the virus. And then this is a list of the other ones. I was, here's um, area substance dispute console. We did not award any funds to the two school districts. Bettendorf and DeWitt both requested. But there is COVID money coming to the schools, so we did not do that. And um, most everybody, what we, what the um, management team looked at is who was actually requesting funds for core services. And so basically, that's what we ended up approving yesterday. But imagine the possibilities got the most and then pathways got forty thousand. Handicap Development Center got fifty-five thousand. One of the things we debated and talked about the most um, was um, they wanted to kind of a an advertising blitz to advertise our crisis services. So that people are more aware of what's going on and that amount was twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And that was for a three-month period, April, May, and June, because the money has to be spent by June thirtieth. Well, after much discussion yesterday, they, they decided that they would try it for one month. And um, that would be seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And there is quite a quite an array of things that that will cover. It will be one. Well, if we did the three months, it would be one program a a month on Paul Sands Live. And then it would be, um, they would be on at the seven AM, six and seven AM news. And um, the, on their face page and that sort of stuff. And I basically, my comment was when they said they wanted to just do it for one month, I said, okay, you do it for one month. Uh, it's gonna take you a while to see if it had any effect on, on, on people contacting the crisis line or getting help. But um, in the end, they decided to do it one month and then I also asked, because this price was for a three-month period, I said, you need to check with them to see if we decide to do it a second and third month, if it's still gonna be the same amount. But, or if it, if since we didn't sign it up at all at the same time, are they going to just adjust that figure for the other two months? So.
It sounds like enough. I mean, you might be surprised how quick somebody would sign up if they know it or, you know. I guess, I I don't know how many people watch the news and and if they would call if they need, if they're need, you know, I guess.
Well, I told him I'd have to get up earlier if I was gonna watch the six and seven o'clock news.
As far as adolescent or child program, um, that has not really been kicked off either.
Well, uh, yesterday we, we did approve um, them advertising for the position. Uh, one of the things, one of the, there's a couple of things we have to determine is where the person would be located and who will be their employee of record. And it was kind of the consensus yesterday that the employee of record really needs to be Scott County. Because she does need to be close to where Lori is. And Lori did tell us yesterday they did have an office that they could rearrange for her to have an office and then who's ever in that office would merge into a a bigger office with someone else. So there's the possibility that um, it will be Scott County. And.
Well, that's good to know. That's getting off the ground anyway. And and if it can be sustained to the point, I mean, there's.
Well, what, what Lori said yesterday, there is money in, in the current budget. If we get one, somebody hired before June thirtieth, there is, there are funds to put them, get them, get them on board right away.
For the next fiscal year.
Not, well, for, for the rest of this year.
And the next.
And then it's obviously it's budgeted for next year. So.
Well, it'd be interesting for somebody like Larry said, to dissect that fifty-some pages and see what kind of changes are in there to bring it forward and say, you know, this is gonna better us or this. That's what I'm hoping for is, it's hard to read them pages and get everything out of there that I need to get out of it.
Yeah, I thought that was a little lost on, I mean, there's so much terminology all over through it.
Once you start breaking it down.
Well, I do know that Lori and the management team were going to get together and go over the bill.
Yeah.
And then.
That's what it takes.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
I, 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 we all said that, you know, since it just came yesterday and, and they, we said, could we have a summary?
Yeah, that's right.
So, and I'm sure, I'm sure we'll get that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then yesterday we had our ECI meeting, um, and uh, Gwen Demming is retiring. So we are going to have a, a executive committee meeting next Monday morning at seven thirty to go over uh job application forms. And um, I told her that I had talked with Becky. And since they're an employee of Clinton and Jackson County, basically, um, I asked Becky if we had to follow the advertising rules and she said, yes, we would have to. So we'll have to advertise in our three papers in Clinton County. They said they thought they only had two papers to whip and Clinton Herald in their county. I, I don't know, but Jim didn't come on the meeting, so I, I wanted to ask him, but he didn't come on the meeting, but we will we will have to advertise it on that. And they were, they said they really didn't want to go on the websites. But I said, well, it doesn't cost anything to go on Iowa Workforce website to have, what was the job opening? So I think they are going to do it. Gwen has offered to stay on for five, five hours a month to just help whoever takes over. And um, so, and she said if she needed to stay on a little bit after the first of the year, we would work that out. And then Clinton County gave us some salary ranges, because there, there, her employee of record. And they follow their salary and their benefits. And um, um, Gwen said, I have to follow their personnel policy book. But we, I do want to have Becky, they also talked about formed applications. So I told um, uh Gwen, I would send her one of ours that we use for all of our employees. And she said that um, she would get one from Jim to for Clinton County, so we can look at those. But because right now it's a, a, an application and um, a letter. A resume and letter, so we'll see what happens. Hopefully we'll have somebody by the first of the year.
Um, are we discussing unfinished business or any?
Anything you want to discuss? We have twenty minutes.
We kept meeting on Friday. And I was a Zoom meeting. And everything's going really well as far as them programs are, uh, they've done some studies and looking at the percentages that are keeping the juveniles and with their families and out of, out of the system, you know, and it's working really well. So I guess it kind of depends on the money coming in again from the federal assistance and state assistance, so it's, but it's working really well, so. And I guess once you knew that Phil was retiring.
Taber, I already was.
Remember, and they give me a name in my book.
Of the new judge, you mean?
Yeah.
Isn't it somebody from Quad Cities, a woman from the Quad Cities, I think?
But that's, that's going well, so.
So the new stimulus package. Like, I think we're getting close to three point seven million.
That's what it said last week on our meeting that we had, three point seven million would be coming to Jackson County. But I guess, you know. I'm curious, have they established guidelines of how we can use it? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I thought we'd get a little more information on that, but it's still kind of vague out there, I think.
Well, was at the Isaac meeting that we sat in on, they were asking questions about that and about every time a question was asked, can we use it for this? Can we use it for this? And yet, yet to be seen would be answered.
Yeah, yeah.
So I don't think they know that, so.
Well, I don't know. That's one of our um, agenda items for ECIA tomorrow. Is that um, uh, stimulus money. And um, I thought the meeting last week was pretty interesting from the, the woman from Washington DC, but told everybody how many how many dollars they were getting. And when you looked at the whole package and three hundred and fifty billion dollars. And all I kept wanting to write in in the chat line is, where's the money coming from? You know, it's just, it's astronomical. I just cannot under, I just I just can't understand what's going on.
It comes for infrastructure and whatnot that we can really use and uh.
Yeah, I do too.
Our county's a little different. Every county's a little different, of course, and all that stuff.
What did say Scott County was gonna, or um, Dubuque County, Dubuque County is gonna get nineteen million and Clinton County is getting seventeen.
Forty million.
Oh, I can believe it. It's all according to the population. It's I mean.
One thing I look at is what, three years ago, Trump did a two-point-two trillion dollar tax rethink on the large corporations. I mean, okay, that probably had some impact, but when you see what that kind of money comes down to us, I mean, what, what happened to that two-point-two trillion dollars? I know it boosted their profits by, I think, twenty-four percent, but did that really come down and help us with our roads? I mean, that's what I was looking for. I mean.
I was, I, you know, all along, they said that one of their goals was the infrastructure.
Yeah.
But nobody helped us very much.
No, and I see this as a way of doing that, so I mean, it's yet to be.
If we can use it that way.
Yeah, if we can use it that way.
But we don't know.
That's kind of the way I took it, but yeah, we still don't know for sure.
Is Marty coming today?
He is not. I just reserved a test. He is at the air facility burning the burn pile.
Okay, of course.
We need to discuss that seeding project there too, before we get too far into the weed growing season.
Seeding.
I hope subject. Field that we covered with nice black dirt last fall and.
So what's type of plants do you put in there so it doesn't?
Oh, petunias and marigolds and.
I think we're just gonna seed it down, but it's gonna have to be straw blown on it or matted or something.
So if you go to like native prairie or something like that, where the roots go down, is that gonna mess with that system or is that gonna help the system?
Think you're gonna plant regular lawn grass, say mow it, there's like a lawn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what's his problem. He was going.
So it needs to be mowed on a regular basis.
Oh, yeah, okay. No doubt. They do too, the new maintenance guy. It really looks nice. What's just needs now that he, Marty called all that dirt in there. Well, we had the dozer in there and put a fence in.
Conservation as a cedar, so.
Yeah, but these poles are only like five feet apart. I guess it's gonna have to be professionally done or Marty or something. I like to talk about it.
So how big an area is it?
Football fields, maybe?
Two football fields?
One and a half football field. It was measured one time. We got it.
I know it's a good size, but I can't remember it being two football fields.
It's bigger than you think.
Well, now's the time to see it, so.
Yeah, and that's why I wanted to talk to him a little bit if he had talked. Because I imagine, well, that's a, I mean, if he can't do it. I don't know if he can rent a polarizer or something, put it in front of his machine to, you know, turn that off. It was all pretty level in there except for around the poles themselves, apart from the septu, there's a lot of them that are there. A hundred poles sticking out of the ground. It's quite a system, yeah.
Well, a lot of these lawn care things, they've got the little one they stand on and right around.
Yeah. Well, you can't take a big machine on that greenfield anyway, but.
I mean, they're the size of a small lawn.
I mean, if it has to be professionally done, we'll just have to get some bids.
Um, I guess one of the other things I, I, I talked to Brent a little bit about it, but I'm getting a little antsy. I want John to get over here so that we can finalize some of the plans on the layout of the jail so that we can get it ready to go out for bid.
And the sooner the better too, I think.
And I hope.
The sooner the better.
And I want him to come in person. I don't want it to be a Zoom session, so.
You're, you have your, you think what you have to have done started the bombing?
Yeah.
No, we definitely need to get, we need to touch base with him and get him here whenever he can.
You're gonna leave on, on the.
I leave on the thirty-first of March and come back on the seventh. I fly out the thirty-first and fly back the seventh.
The sixth, April sixth is the day that Jack will be gone.
And your wife says you're gonna be gone too.
I potentially will be back.
Not if she has her way.
I'll be there. I mean, it's the case where, if, if, if I'm not, I might be on the road. I don't know. Well, I can zoom on my phone, but.
Well, I can, I'm gonna zoom in for that meeting. And I'll have you conduct it.
Okay.
There was some discussion about just having a short meeting too. We have that public hearing at ten o'clock.
And that's, you know, otherwise when I was in and talked, we were thought we'd even cancel it, but then we already publicized. Yes.
Work it out. I, I mean, this, this kind of thing works good for us and.
Yeah, and even if you're traveling, Mike, I mean, if it's gonna be fifteen, twenty minutes, you can just pull off and.
Oh, yeah.
Or stop or whatever.
Well, I wouldn't say that it would be much more than ten or fifteen minutes.
Yeah, well, if we start at nine though, and we got public hearing at ten.
Is that correct? Can we change the date to start?
Well, we can change the start time.
Like, yeah, eight forty-five or something? No, nine forty-five. Well, feeling like about ten or fifteen minutes.
Well, we got short.
Yeah, the ten o'clock public hearing that will take three minutes.
Okay, so can we start at ten o'clock, open with public hearing?
Yeah.
Whatever works.
Then whatever else there is, I mean, it's.
Because it's not a claim week. Because we checked that out when I was here with Lisa and and Luanne.
So it's, I mean, it's all you wanna do. I mean, I don't know. You know, I mean, approve my minutes, be the only, like I said, it's not a claim week, so approve my minutes and.
Well, I think somebody has to certainly get a hold of John and.
All I got is number right here. Should we call him and see when he's available? Okay, this time we'll recess till ten o'clock when we have our public hearing. Okay, this time we'll open the public hearing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget. It doesn't look like we have uh anybody but Kelly on, um, so.
Any explanation that you'd like to put out there?
Um, the only thing that I would, um, did you get this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The difference between last year and the current year, we raised the dollars seven point nine million to eight million, two hundred and forty-five thousand. So for, in other words, we increased the total dollars tax assets by three hundred by three hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And that's basically because we established the levy for the debt service for the jails.
Yes, and that's the debt service levy is even more than the difference. So we lowered the tax act.
Actually.
Take that out, we lower. Take that out, we lowered the tax asking.
The difference is point zero four, zero four seven.
In, yes.
In the overall levy.
Yes.
So less than a nickel.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we actually lowered expenses.
We lowered expenses, we lowered, if you take out that debt service, we lowered the tax asking, we lowered the levy rate. So the only reason that things are going up slightly is because of that debt service.
And that's. And that's actually starting the payment on the jail in twenty-two, even before the jail is built. So that we can get it done as quick as possible. Kelly, do you have any questions for us?
Not off the top of my head, Ben.
I'll make a motion to throw the public hearing.
I would second.
With a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
So moving forward with the budget process here, this morning I need a motion to approve accepting and placing and file the compensation boards recommended the election, elected officials compensation schedule for fiscal year twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
With a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Motion needed to approve resolution number eight hundred dash zero three dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one. Certifying the Board of Supervisors approved salary adjustments for all elected officials for fiscal year twenty twenty-one slash twenty twenty-two in resolution book four, page three forty.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Motion need to approve resolution number eight oh one dash zero three dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one. Adopting the proposed Jackson County budget for the fiscal year starting July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, including the reduced compensation board salary recommendation from four point five percent to three percent as approved in resolution number eight hundred dash zero three dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-one recorded in resolution book four, page three forty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize Chair Willie to assign the adoption of budget and certification of taxes for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two and direct auditor Smith to file all required forms with the Iowa Department of Management as required by law.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
And for that, that takes care of all of the necessary motions and resolutions to pass the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget.
Well, I would, I would just like to say that, um, uh, Larry and Mike and myself really appreciate the efforts that the Auditor's Office put in and the other elected officials we, and department heads, we wanted to make sure that we were offering the services we needed to. And we wanted it to in the most cost-effective way and we basically said, you know, bring your budget worksheets in and, uh, we don't want any fluff. We need to provide the services, but we really need to. Everybody's very, very conscientious about their tax dollars and their tax bills and Lisa and Shelley, you are absolutely wonderful.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. It's, it's, uh, thank you for your kind words. I think this is definitely where Team Jackson County, um, we've come together as a team and we've come up with what I think is a good working budget. And, um, you know, if we work together, it seems like, you know, all our slaves up there makes for the job a lot easier, so.
It's nice having the background here to, when we come up with questions, you have the answers where you find them. And that's, that's really important to make a good decision, so.
Ian, if we do it, have you changed the percentages and go through all of that process?
When we ask, we dock at the same time, so we don't get hit with something, but.
But it's okay to talk about it. How's that?
Yeah.
Exactly.
And that was, that was the best part is we, we, we talked about it and worked through it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. So to finish out the rest of my agenda, um, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers.
Oh, move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a class B beer permit with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Zingel Recreation Association at twenty-eight, four sixty-one, one hundred and ninety-fourth Avenue, effective May first, twenty twenty-one to November first, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the class B, uh, beer permit for the Zingel Recreation Association. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
My final thing for today is I do need a motion to approve invoices for five thousand and eighteen dollars and four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants and nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars to SA Architects for the Together We Build project for a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried.
That's all I have for the morning today.
Thank you.
Well, Shelley, we got that under our hat now. Oh, we have to do a sign and send it in, right?
Which thing?
The budget.
Yes. The cares move.
Oh. Are we gonna get some additional information of how that can be spent?
Certainly will.
I would hope so.
Think so. I mean, if they want us to spend it in a conscientious manner.
Well, I know, I, I know, I know what my conscientious would be.
So do you have any idea what the timeframe of this is?
No.
It sounds like it comes over the next three years.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah, two for sure.
I wonder if we're gonna have to establish a certain line item or something.
I think we get, I think we get fifty percent of, of, of the first year and then maybe a twenty-five to twenty-five. I'm not real sure how, I don't think they, they really know.
Well, we'll have to.
But I'm sure there might be questions at the ISAC too, maybe.
I'm sure that'd be, uh, subject to audit.
I'm sure we'll get some updates from, uh, from ISAC.
Yeah. 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 Okay, all right. Anything else?
Nope, just thanks a lot.
Thank you.
You can have audits. Rob Sand on ICAP, and ICAP says, why should you audit us? Like it is, to me, it's our money. And they're supposed to be a nonprofit.
I agree.
Yeah.
It was email.
Especially the trips they're taking to all these nice places for their meetings and whatever. I'm like, okay, that's, that's a big red flag.
Anytime you start seeing things like that, you have to question whether it's all above board or not.
Hmm. I mean, Zoom is pretty good.
We're having an increase this year.
Yeah, we did. And no, no refund or contribution for being a faithful member for X number of years.
I wonder where that money went.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really happy with Rob Sand and, uh, I think he's asking.
I think he's wonderful.
Needs to be asked, yeah.
Certainly checks into things.
Yeah. Well, is there anything else to come before the meeting today?
Make motion adjourn.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, meeting's adjourned.